Okay, the time is now 5:00 PM and I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. If you haven't already done so, please silence your cell phones at this time. I need to do, nope, I already did. And if you haven't done so, please sign in in the back. We begin this evening with a public hearing for the rezoning of 1302 Willow Oaks Drive. So, at this time, I will call this public hearing open. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak for or against the rezoning of 1302 Willow Oaks So, the initial, sorry, your question was, it says 397 Blake Drive, that is the owner's address, but the rezoning address is actually 1302 Willow Oaks Drive? Yes, if you'd like to come and speak.
So, we're talking about the golf course, the old golf course area of that, correct? Okay, and so, having, I had to find out about this with somebody in Florida, number one, knew nothing about it, nothing was said to the neighbors, you know, throughout that area. My concern is, because of the way that golf course is laid out, what type of, what type of establishments are going in, are apartments going in there, and there's houses going in there, or exactly what it is, what, why are they asking for the rezoning details, where it is going to?
So, that is, uh, what I'll bring up for that. So, it's going from...
Anyways, he doesn't, they don't claim to be anything. Part of the problem is, he got part of his R1 and part of his R8, he's wants his property on zone one, so, R8.
Cause, I mean, he's owned that property for a long time, and I'm surprised that it's now just coming out, and that he's wanting to do this with the property. So, I think, it comes a little bit concerning to me when you read what the difference is between the two of them. You know, why would it be that he's asking for rezoning when it's been that way for forever, since the Willow Oaks Golf Course has closed down?
And I don't know if you have to ask him, or you just signed him?
So, he's just asking for the rezoning with nothing else happening with that?
So, his plan are to do nothing with, even like it is? And he does, and he still would have to go from our, my, cause it's on.
Okay, so, is that something that, if you're going to rezone something with a neighbor, is that something that should be known to the neighbors of that neighborhood?
What we say?
To the people of that neighborhood?
We have that.
No, I, I, like I said, I had to find out from somebody in Florida that used to be my neighbor, who now lives in Florida, she, she told me all about it. My neighbors across the street knew nothing about it.
There's some posts down there, we got a post on our website, and I got a notice on our, whatever.
But not everybody, not everybody goes on the website, so, I, I don't know very much, but, okay, that's, that's gonna be the deal that I'm fine with. But I, I still think that, you know, I think the neighbors in the neighborhood have the right to know on their own, regardless if it's gonna be something with it or not. We have the right to know, and like I said, I was just a little disturbed about it, that I had to hear from somebody else about what was going to happen. And then not knowing his thoughts behind what he was going to do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against the rezoning of 1302 Willow Oaks Drive? So, at this time, I will call this public hearing to a close, and we will open the next public hearing, which is the rezoning of 473 and 493 Parker Drive. So, I call this public hearing open. Is there anyone in attendance that is for or against the rezoning of 473 and 493 Parker Drive? So, at this time, I will call this public hearing to a close. And next up, we have a proclamation. Make a difference day? Yes.
Make a difference day proclamation. Whereas since 1992, Make a Difference Day has been recognized in October as a national holiday, dedicated volunteering has become the largest national day of community service in the United States. And whereas connecting with others and working together to be volunteering, bridge differences, and separate people, and help solve some of the serious social problems facing us as a nation. And whereas volunteering is a powerful way to develop and spread unity, and respect among all people across all religions, beliefs, ethnicities, economic standings, and nationalities. And whereas Ozark is fortunate to have so many caring residents who are willing to give their, their valuable time, energy, and talents to making a difference in the lives of others and in the community. And whereas share the desire to promote stability, kindness, respect for all people, and to unitedly act on that desire by being fully serving others. And whereas these actions also encourage pride, self-investment, and a feeling of personal ownership in the community, and break about joy, fulfillment, and increased desire to continue volunteering. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Mark Plankett, Mayor of the City of Ozark, Alabama, hereby declares October 25th as Make a Difference Day in the City of Ozark, Alabama, and urge all citizens to join in observing this day by connecting with friends, coworkers, relatives, and with religious schools and civic groups to engage in projects benefiting our community. Witness whereof, set by the hand of Mayor Mark Plankett, calls this great seal of the City of Ozark to be effective at Ozark, Yale County, Alabama, this 20th Thursday of October 2025.
Thank you. Council members? Yeah, Buzz, just put Buzz in right now. He's kinda handing it over to us. Ms. Susan, would, would somebody like to say something about how to get involved on Saturday, or?
Yes, get involved on Saturday. But we're encouraging everybody, whether it be, make your own home in your neighborhood, at your church, just on Saturday.
Excuse us, she's, she's making some announcements.
You have to just be intentional about doing good for our community. It can be something as simple as doing happy birthday boxes for somebody working someone's yard. The baseball team is gonna be coming up around Career Center. That's how Badges Church, they're making things for marriages first. First child horrendous is going to win our flowers. Harvest is going to be working with our kids home. Youth and Bachelors in the Chamber are making for foster children. So, just whatever your heart, whatever is placed on your heart, try to make a difference this week, leading up to Make a Difference Month. For any other information, or Jason Crowe, or First child horrendous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the tagline.
Thank you. She was trying to get name, and he missed all the information. It's okay. All right. So, at this time, we will go over the agenda for the next meeting. So, after a call to order and prayer and pledge of allegiance, the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on October 1st, 2024, will be read. Council members, do you have any, sir, hey, Jeff, 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 can, can, thank you. All right. So, after a call to order and prayer and pledge of allegiance, the minutes from the regular council meeting from October 1st will be reviewed. Council members, have you had a chance to review those minutes? Thank you. Um, the item number five is the ordinance for rezoning the 1302 Willow Oaks Drive. Do you have any questions about, about that ordinance? Item number six is the rezoning of 473 and 493 Parker Drive. Do you have any questions about any rezoning of those?
No.
Item number seven is discussion for consideration of upcoming city council meetings.
Okay, so, we do have the inauguration scheduled for November the 3rd at 9:00 AM. And so, City Council needs to set the organizational meeting, and we need to do it at this meeting so that we can get that advertised and on books.
Okay. So, what is your suggestion on date and time?
My suggestion would also be on November the 3rd at 10:30 AM.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions or concerns about the organizational meeting going in at 10:30 AM on the 3rd?
My question would be, we may not be finished. You have in the program and then the reception, I think. Am I right? Immediately after the program, there's coffee doughnuts or whatever the gate may be, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
In talking with the elected mayor, it's gonna be short and sweet. So, I think we can get it done and...
I was just thinking 10 might give us enough time to get from there back to City Hall after those two, two items, the program and the...
So, moving it up half an hour?
Yeah, moving it up.
It's 10:30.
10:30.
Another.
You said move it up at 10?
Okay, well, it starts at 9, I was thinking 11, that's what.
Oh, okay.
11.
It had been done at 11 in the past, but, um, it's, it's y'all's decision. I'm just, it's just a suggestion.
They have an hour worth of program, hour worth of, uh, refreshments, I don't know. It's just cutting it closer a little bit, I think.
So, do we want to set 10:30 or 11?
It's up to you.
How about we set 11 just to be safe? 11 just to be safe. All right. But then that also means that if our organizational meeting runs along, we're gonna be running into lunch. But, I mean, we will have just had snacks, so it's fine. Okay. All right. And then what, was that the only one?
Uh, yeah. You, you do have the option, you know, it's been discussed throughout some of the cities that they would like to go ahead and do their normal first of the month meeting, right after that organizational meeting, but that's strictly up to y'all, as to far as whether or not you would wanna go ahead and do that or come back the next night, Tuesday night, to have the first city council meeting.
I mean, I'm fine with Tuesday. It's, it's the day that we normally do it, so.
I mean, I'm just, let's, we can address the Farm City thing.
When you say your thing, let's cover that first. You're fine with what?
Uh, with coming back on Tuesday.
Okay, all right.
So, then we would have to deal with the Farm City stuff because of those, because of the time running up against that. Well, no, cause the Farm City stuff isn't, isn't following, right?
Yeah.
So, we would still have that time.
That was just for informational purposes, to make y'all aware of it at some point. That has to be decided as to far as whether or not y'all are gonna change those meetings. But it can be done at the first meeting in November, since the City Council, new sitting council would be on board at that time.
You know, originally, we replaced Farm City proclamation with the Make a Difference proclamation for this meeting.
Yes.
Yes. So, we can do, but we could still do that on November 4th.
Right.
Okay. So, then, normal, or at least suggestion would be organizational meeting 11:00 AM, normal council meeting on Tuesday. All right. So, therefore, nothing needs to be changed for that Tuesday. All right. Uh, we do need to add an agenda item?
Yeah, so, I was contacted by a commercial bank today. We need to increase our ACH limit to 250,000 because our payroll, as with everything else, expenses continue to increase. And so, due to the salaries over the years, and I'm not sure exactly how long, but it's been at 225,000. And they notified us that on a couple of occasions, that it's exceeded 225,000. So, they have contacted us and asked us to increase our ACH limit for payroll up to 250 so that they can be in compliance. And I'm asking for y'all to give me the authorization to sign the ACH documents with Commercial Bank to allow that to happen, so we can get paid this week.
I mean, I think that's definitely doable. So, council members, item number eight would be an authorization for Chris to increase our ACH limit with Commercial Bank to 250,000. Okay. All right. So, with that, I will go out into the audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and state your name for me, okay?
My name is Kenny Vivens, and I live in the Ray Strack Community, Holman Street, in College Lane. And I'm trying to see about how we can get it cleaned up. Okay, I did take some pictures so that you all can see it.
Thank you, Ms. Vivens.
Yeah. Cause there's quite a few people over in that area that has property and they don't keep it clean. Trying to figure out what we can do to contact those, you know, property owners.
Okay, so...
I mean, cause if they're not gonna take care of it, maybe they possibly need somebody over in there that will take care of it.
So, that's, that's, that's a good point. So, I will pass these down so that they can see it. So, if it is owned by a private property owner, what we can do, and it can be you, or since you actually came to council, we can have those addresses put, um, put on the list in order to get them on the rotation for public nuisance. And then if it goes through that entire process, we make the owners aware that someone has made a complaint, and whether it's grass cutting, or anything that needs to happen to the property, we give them a little bit of time. There's a, there's a set amount of time in, for which they can make that right. And if not, the city goes in and does it for them, and then we charge them, and it gets added to their property taxes.
And also, what I wanted to ask about the land that the city owns in certain parks down in that area, cause I know years ago, it was supposed to have like, Hyde Park or something.
Yeah, that was the...
I'm just trying to figure out, cause it used to go all the way around, you know, in a circle, especially, I remember it as a, as a child, that it used to go all the way around. Now, you can't hardly get down in there. Trees are down in there. And I do know they were starting to sell off some lots, maybe in real estate or, I actually was wanting to get some down.
Get some of them.
What I would like to know, when they're gonna do.
Well, if it is, if it, if it is city property, that would be our responsibility to take care of. Now, if it's not on a right of way where someone, you know, where if it's not public facing or anything like that, that would be very low priority for them to go and fix.
Yeah, but they consider maybe those, I'm sure, how the land was acquired in their domain, what, you know, my, and I'm just trying to figure out, what are they going to do, and not sell it off.
Uh, yeah, this time, there's no, there are no plans for it. I know, I do know Mr. Jackson has asked a couple times, and I guess that would be a question for the next council, the next mayor, if they're interested in selling it back off or anything like that, cause it is city-owned now.
It's for sale.
It is for sale?
Yeah.
It's, it's been up for sale?
It's been up for sale.
Oh, that's right, you just said, so, it's just up for sale. Yeah, we don't, the city has no plans to develop it in any manner at this time.
Where can we get the information from this part?
On the GIS.
The GIS?
Yes.
And also...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vivens, I would also like to say, I have, on numerous occasions, asked my colleagues what our intent was to do with the land. So, as far as it being up for sale, I've been hearing that all along. The problem is, we're not really doing a good job at set up advertising that it is for sale. Hopefully, we can place a large sign out on the front of the, frontage of the property, letting the citizens know that it's for sale. Just to place it on the website, and maybe on everything those, or everyone doesn't look at those type of mechanisms. So, we need to do a better job, and perhaps we'll advertise.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Okay. So, with that, I will go to final comments. Councilman Enfry?
I just wanna thank the citizens of Ozark, allowing me to serve as your council member for 13 years. It's been an honor, pleasure, and I'm humbled that they, that I could be elected. I wish the new city council and mayor the best, with them doing great, Ozark to do great, and everybody supporting, get behind them, let's make, just keep Ozark going. The projects we've got lined up, just don't ditch them, just keep working on. I thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm recently returning from the AUSA, that's the Association of the United States Army, annual meeting in Washington DC. I got to see things for myself. Actually, actually, there were about four of us who were recognized for our over 25 years of supporting AUSA National. I hadn't given it a thought until I received a call while I was up there. But we have a new Secretary of the Army, Dan Driscoll, and he's making a major transformation throughout the United States Army. You will probably see some of the transformation at Fort Rapid in the near future, in spite of the fact that, you know, our service members have had to endure with this budget not being passed and, and all. But a lot of things are gonna be on the forefront for equipment, as well as for the men and women in uniform. Hopefully, Fort Rapid will come out strong, gaining some things. We hope we don't lose anything, but there is always that opportunity that we could lose something. So, I just like for us to be mindful of this transformation of our US, United States Army that's on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pearl?
All right, I just, you know, was it last game of Carroll High's football season? It was this Friday night, it's on the road at Headland, just a short drive over there. It's been a, been a tough season this year, but still gotta help support our kids and the players and coaches. So, if y'all can make a short drive over to Headland Friday night, cheer on the Eagles. Also, Carroll High Basketball kicks their season off Thursday, November 13th, against New Brockman at, at our gym here. The JV boys start at 4:30, varsity girls start at 5:30, and the varsity boys start at 7:00. So, go out and support our basketball kids at Carroll High School.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Harlow?
Yes, I have the prepared statement, and I'd like to read it.
Sure.
So, bear with me, please, I'm gonna read it, but I'll try not to make it too boring. Reflecting on my service to the city council, as my term as city council member for the City of Ozark comes to a close, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the incredible journey serving from 2020 to 2025, especially as the only newly elected council member at the time, was both a unique challenge and a great honor. It gave me the opportunity to help shape the direction of our city in meaningful ways, and I am immensely proud of what we've achieved together. From, from the start, I focused on initiatives that would strengthen Ozark's financial health and improve our city's infrastructure. Thanks to the hard work of my colleagues, city staff, and engaged residents, we accomplished a great deal. We increased the city's general fund revenue by 23.5%, helping to secure essential services and projects. Even more notably, we grew the city's reserve from 750,000 in 2020 to 3.8 million in 2025, establishing a much stronger financial foundation for the future. We also tackled issues that had long hindered our city's growth. More than 80 nuisance or abandoned properties were abated, helping revitalize neighborhoods and create opportunities for development. And in a project close to my heart, every public playground in Ozark was renovated or updated, ensuring the safe welcoming spaces for our children to play and thrive. Throughout my term, Ozark proudly led the way with several innovative initiatives. We were the first city in the area to establish a successful entertainment district, bringing renewed energy and economic activity to our downtown. We also launched our region's first indoor pickleball facility, helping to promote health, recreation, and community connection. It's been both encouraging and validating to see neighboring communities follow our lead. As they say, imitation is a censor's form of flattery, and it speaks volumes about the strength and creativity of the ideas born right here in Ozark. Of course, the work was not without challenges. Navigating the political landscape and balancing competing interests often tested my resolve, but those experiences only deepened my belief in public service and my commitment to doing what's right, even when it's not easy. While I was not reelected for the next term, I remain proud of what we accomplished during my term on the council. I'm taking this moment to refocus and reprioritize and to explore new ways to serve Ozark community, whether through public service or other avenues. To the people of Ozark, thank you for your trust, your support, and your partnership. Together, we've laid a strong foundation, and I look forward to seeing all the ways the city will continue to grow, excuse me, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, mine is very short, that I extend deepest gratitude to you, Leah, and to you, Stanley, for your terms, term, term, and terms in public office. I did not know a time without you on council, Stanley, and I have watched you grow. Both of your services have been an inspiration in completely different ways. Stanley is very, very resolute in his beliefs, and, and it was always interesting to watch the innovator come in and go, I wanna do this, I wanna do this, I wanna do this. And then Stanley go and, but that's not the way to do it. But us as a team, that's what council does. We are never going to always agree. And I hope that new council never always agrees on things. Hopefully, we are guaranteed of that, because that's the beautiful thing about our freedom to elect our representatives, that we are electing five different minds that have one goal, and the goal is the betterment of our city. The one thing I can say for both of you, because I've seen it, both of you are very selfless in your dedication to our city, and both of you have made long-lasting impacts on our, your fellow council members, definitely on me, in the way that you have served. And hopefully, I take a piece of you and you with me into the next term. I can, I mean, and you, and you, and everyone that has ever served, former mayors, current mayors, future mayors, everyone we ever worked with will become part of us, no matter what team we're on. As long as we are all Team Ozark, we are gonna survive and push forward. And so, thank you both for your... And so thank you both for your service and for everything that you have always done for us, everything that you will always do, because I know that I can always call you and say, hey, I need this for the city. And I fully believe that both of you will say yes. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. With that, I call, oh, yeah, that was final comments. So I will call this meeting to a close, and we will begin the next meeting in three minutes. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We will begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilman Infiger, and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.